I also spoke with several business owners, and they are overwhelmingly for it. It's unfortunate that those business owners are afraid to speak up for fear of retaliation or being hit up on Yelp by people that don't share their view. To delay this project in hopes of tying it to the AES site is pure folly. At this point, we have no control over the future of AES. Councilman Brand himself said it is a possibility that a foreign investor could buy the property and just land bank it. We don't know, so we have no influence on that situation. The time is now for the waterfront proposal to become a reality. It's been a long time coming. I went to a funeral today. It makes you realize how short a time we really have. Waiting is a waste of time and time we don't have. Please approve this proposal, deny the appeal, and let's make it happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Neil Splatskowski? Come on, I got the name right. Susan Bulley? Susan here? Okay, Sheila Lamb, I know her. Sheila? And then after Sheila's Amy Yosefek.
Good evening. Sheila Lamb, District Four. Thank you so much, Mayor and council members, for this hearing this evening. Tonight, you've heard many residents speaking out against this development. We're a diverse group of people. These residents who are against the development. And 7,000 of us signed a petition communicating to you that we do not support, as residents, we don't support this development. This is our public land. We are against putting a mall on this public land, that is, the purpose of which is for harbor-dependent recreational uses. We're from all your districts. I'd like you to consider the number of people who have communicated to you that they do not support this development. And I'd like you to oppose the waterfront development and support this appeal. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Amy, and then Davis Osmina.
Amy Josephek, Hollywood Riviera. Thank you for the opportunity to speak again tonight. I wish it wasn't to repeat so much of what I've had to say these past two years, but this time, rather than Legato's traffic and density issues, it's about similar problems with CenterCal's Mall by the Sea. This all stems from a deteriorating parking structure since the city didn't use its tremendous parking income to fix the structure itself. Meanwhile, commercial space will double, but parking has only increased by 8 percent. And I honestly can't tell if you're betting on success or for total mall failure. Traffic-wise, you're adding hundreds of thousands of square feet of commercial footage, yet you are not and cannot increase the roads that feed into or exit the harbor area. There's the terrible financial deal itself, giving mall developer CenterCal the upside, while its Redondo residents will be burdened with the financial risks and downside. Mayor Aspel has already made his mind up refusing a city council advisory vote or the chance to analyze CenterCal finances. And the same goes for some council members already out shilling for CenterCal even before final votes have been taken. So much for impartial deliberation. If it's a commercial success, that means huge additional traffic jams for the people who actually live here. If it's a failure, this huge white elephant will have store after empty store looking out onto what were once magnificent harbor views, not view corridors. Redondo has actually done this once before, many of you know, in the late '70s, when the city allowed high-rise apartments to be crammed onto Esplanade. No amount of money will ever be available to restore those gorgeous views. Instead, you're actually prioritizing a movie theater and luxury shopping, questionable at best, considering a little online shopping thing called Amazon and stay-at-home movie site called Netflix. And you're prioritizing that over using this unique, never-to-be-replaced location as the recreational water-based spot that it is and should continue to be. Sorry, Mayor Aspel, I know that your stated legacy is to bring shoppers to Redondo Beach, and that sounds good to you. When I had a trek to El Segundo to see the 3D model, I was fascinated by a story told by our guide. She met an area resident annoyed by the traffic faced each time she went to Santa Monica. The CenterCal employee's reply was, "Good news, now you won't have to go to Santa Monica anymore." "Why?" I asked. "Because Santa Monica will now be here?" "Yes," she replied happily. Maybe the irony was a little too subtle for her. I guess she hadn't bothered to listen to the myriad Redondo Beach residents who've stated so many times, "If I'd wanted to live in Santa Monica, I'd have moved to Santa Monica." Redondo Beach has a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to step back and actually come up with a vision, a plan for what this wonderful beach city, including the 50 AES acres, could look like in the future. A vision for a vibrant harbor area, the only one of its kind in the entire South Bay. No one, no human, no god will ever be able to make another one of these ever again. Please don't give away this public land for another mall, one that won't replace what the Galleria once was, and no, it won't punish Torrance either.
Thank you, Amy.
It'll only punish the future generations of Redondo and South Bay residents who, once shown what used to exist here, could have been here, will say, "What were you possibly thinking?"
Thank you. David Osmina? David here? Okay, Michael Gervais and Lisa Gervais? Okay. Carrie Watson? Oh, come on. You, Carrie?
Laura Duke. I guess I was called earlier, and I missed you, I was in the library.
Yeah, come on up. What's your name?
Laura Duke.
Okay.
Yeah. Good evening, city council, Mr. Mayor, city staff. My name's Laura Duke, I live in District Three. At first, I was truly excited about CenterCal. They said they were guided by the Project for Public Spaces, but I don't see it now. The qualities that make for a great harbor pier emphasize the water and well-connected public spaces. Retail is a part of that, but it's not the whole point. Project for Public Spaces' site actually shows what looks exactly like our current seaside lagoon. It seems to have just occurred to CenterCal that local identity is important, but their model shows otherwise. For example, I say we keep the big metal pier sails. They're even part of our pier logo. They're dated, they're goofy-looking, they've got old paint, but they can easily be modernized and beautiful, made beautiful again. They're unique to our pier, and CenterCal has them gone. I told the CenterCal PR person their plan is too much. She said, "It has to be this big to be viable." This destroys the main point that Project for Public Spaces says waterfronts should abide by. You should not have waterfronts given to a developer to dictate what happens there. On the seaside lagoon, it is unbelievable that we can't treat the lagoon water, I mean literally unbelievable. At a recent Harbor Commission meeting, our city staff said that we've been fined thousands of dollars for improperly returning water back to the ocean. They pushed the twisted logic that the only solution was to shut down the current lagoon and open it to the polluted harbor waters. Commissioner Bloss looked incredulous and asked why the water couldn't be treated properly before returning to the ocean. She got a convoluted response and seemed as unconvinced as the rest of us, yet continued on the next topic. The Harbor Commission's decision to approve the EIR, in spite of their unanswered questions, was wrong. By the way, that's why tonight, that's what tonight was supposed to be about. Not by us hearing more stories and being baffled by CenterCal and their heartwarming stories and their parade of contractors telling the same thing. Further, if CenterCal's project must be this retail-heavy, then the city staff needs to admit they made a mistake and end this relationship. Let them go and do it the right way, start from a genuine place where you involve residents, public agencies, not Kiwanis, but people who know what they're doing as far as waterfronts. Private firms, for sure, you need them too, to produce a collective vision for all. Tap into the cities with harbors and piers that got it right, Baltimore, Stockholm, Sydney, and other waterfronts right here in California. This is not unprecedented territory.
Laura, your time's up.
Okay.
Thank you.
And ultimately, CenterCal, if they won't budge, they must go. Remember, it's our pier, not theirs. Thank you very much.
Okay. Carrie Watson? Chris Watson? Probably not. Arthur Rodriguez? Mary Yule? I know you're here, I can see you there. Is Ernest Nelsoriano here? Soriano? Okay.
Mary Yule, you've heard this before. The problems we face today cannot be solved with the same level of thinking we had when we created them. Albert Einstein. Number one, no master plan or comprehensive general plan executed in 20 years. The one proposed that is not available to us at this point is not available to us. Therefore, we are dealing with very partial information or the equivalent of an uninformed decision of great magnitude. Two, at the conclusion of the Harbor Commission hearings, two members refused or refrained from voting to approve CenterCal's proposal. One stating that the present plan is an accident waiting to happen. That level of the city's minimizing and denying of the safety risks is old thinking. The Harbor Master also made bold statements, warning about the unsafe conditions that CenterCal's plan proffers. Because the city has received these warnings, which define the problem as unsafe, the city incurs liability for the accidents predicted. To state, "We've not had accidents there before," is very negligent non-thinking. The unwillingness to honor the financial viability of CenterCal and its main investor shows total lack of fiduciary responsibility to Redondo Beach residents, especially on the part of Mayor Aspel, who shows the old boys' club thinking when he said, "If it's good enough for CenterCal, it's good enough for me." Four, the building of a large commercial project for which no local merchant will be able to afford the square footage, which makes me wonder why is the Chamber of Commerce supporting this? In ratio to the small coastal-dependent recreational access that it allows for. This is old thinking. The same old thinking and lack of consciousness that have outdated the Galleria Shopping Center and its indoor movie theater now is being duplicated by CenterCal. Fred Bruning is selling you photoshopped dreams and romanticizing us, invoking our emotions. Jim White, who I support fully, presents us with well-thought-out substantive facts, but not sexy ones. I am someone who doesn't trust photoshopped renditions.
Thank you.
I also have a statement from my neighbor who's too sick to come. She's appeared-
She's out of time. Your red light's on, sorry.
Okay.
Sorry.
Shall I pass this on?
You can pass it to Eleanor, and we will look at it. Thank you. Is there a motion to receive and file? Thanks. Okay, Ernest Sovian? Chris Huntington? Peter Riley? Oh, here we go. Alalio Vatalugia? Well, they're here, they'll know that's their name. Okay. Ah, Michelle Einat? Kathleen Davis? Steve Davis? Mario Batista? Justin Kelly? Joe Mercado? Jacob Aviles? Jesus Cardenas? Alton Wilkerson? Tim Dornberg? Roberto Duennas? Local 11, okay, that's not his last name, he's Local 11, okay. Jeff Gilbert? Cool. And then after Jeff, Tom Wuj? Hi.
Hi, I'm Jeff Gilbert, District Two. I'm also the Executive Secretary of the Southwest Anglers, one of the oldest outdoor sporting clubs in the South Bay and Southern California, actually. I'm here to ask that the selection of Mall B for the boat launch location be examined for reconsideration. Recreational resources of Redondo B should be the focus of the harbor revitalization project. Redondo Beach does not have a boat launch, only a limited-use hoist. The other hoist was allowed to deteriorate to the point of being condemned. A boat launch will be a great thing for our harbor. A lot of my members can't be here right now, they had to go home because they have to leave early to launch from Marina Del Rey, since our hoist doesn't open that early in the morning. Anyway, we've got a great location, maybe the best in this area for outdoor recreation out on the water. Public workshops that I attended, I went to all but one, all seem to designate Mall C as the best choice. Somehow, the city staff chose Mall A to present to the Harbor Commission and the city council. Mall A was on the bottom of the list. I don't know where they got that idea. Anyway, later on, after that was kicked out, Mall B was presented to the Harbor Commission. I heard that Portofino lobbied to take Mall C off the table because they were afraid of rowdy boat people. I'm 63, so I'd like to be in that group. Anyway, I'm glad we finally have a boat launch location in the works, but is Mall B a safe location? Is it the best location? Parking is very limited. They've cut down parking quite a bit. It's probably under the prescribed amount required by the Coastal Commission right now. There's limited pull-through parking spots, so now you're asking, you know, boat trailers to back up, and with the outrigger canoe people and kids in the area, I don't think that's very safe at all. There's no designated overflow parking, that's been pointed out by the city staff. The public workshop selected Mall C. This is from everybody that has business and recreation there in the harbor, but it seems to me that the staff has ignored its advantages to choose Mall B, which has more flaws that we could see. Yeah, I know, we have to buy out the Crab Shack lease, but, you know, is that the biggest issue? If Redondo Beach should choose the best location, if Mall B is better than Mall C, then please show me why. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Jeff. Okay, Tom Wuj? Okay. Jonathan Serna? Don Ziss?
Hello.
Hi, good evening. I think you know me. I think I have a neighbor here. My name is Miriam Nash. I have nothing prepared in terms of anything written. The last few months, I've been going to the Harbor Commission meetings, and I would say that up until then, my head was pretty much in the sand, and honestly, I wish it still was. I'm really pretty much appalled at how this project is moving forward in spite of the fact that a lot of questions have been raised and a lot of concerns have been raised, and yet it's still being pushed through. I understand the need to revitalize, there's no question about that. I don't think we should even talk about that. However, to go do that and to sell our soul and the soul of the city to a private entity, I think is not only immoral, I think it's inexcusable. And I think that there are a variety of ways of doing this. I was at one of the meetings where they talked about public funds, public possibility, public help for the city that would have cost the city not a penny, and yet the Harbor Commission completely ignored that. I also did go that Wednesday night that the CenterCal was open to residents in El Segundo, and I questioned why that presentation was not here at the Redondo Library for a couple of months for all the residents to see. I collected signatures. I, if there's nothing to hide, that should have been available to each and every one of us. I collected signatures, and a lot of people like myself had absolutely no idea that this was going down, to the extent that it is. When I asked a question of CenterCal about downsizing this project and would they be willing to stay on board if there were some changes made, initially, they wouldn't even answer me. I kept re-asking the question, and it was until a gentleman about two feet taller than me sort of yelled the question that finally the answer came out, that it was all or nothing. And for me, that's not a good enough reason to put something forward. I think that there needs to be much more discussion on this, and I think that the residents of Redondo Beach are deserving of that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Candace Nefisi? And after Candace is Jose Alonso Hermosillo.
Good evening, Mayor, staff, and city council. My name is Candace Nefisi, I live in District Three, I'm also the co-leader of Rescue Our Waterfront. In 2015, I ran for city council in this beautiful city. I proudly walked District Three and learned what the concerns were in this city, and it didn't take long for me to realize that overdevelopment was a very big concern in this city. It became even more apparent in my election when large donations were given to Mr. Horvath and the mayor, and they funneled through their campaigns from a corrupt developer. Especially when the Chamber of Commerce funneled $30,000 into Horvath's campaign, when our residents saw Mickey Marafino, an employee of CenterCal, walking the streets for Council Member Horvath. Residents struggled with the fact that developers were buying council seats, making donations to elected officials with this idea that there could be a quid pro quo agreement. The best interest of our community was at stake, and people woke up. People were disgusted by this. I've had the honor of the last 10 months, meeting with the community to learn more about their concerns on waterfront development. I've co-led this community organization called Rescue Our Waterfront, and I've co-led and led over 20 public informational meetings in the last 10 months. We've surpassed the number of public meetings that CenterCal has had. They've always been public, they've never been in private homes or cocktail parties, always open to both sides and always welcome the people on both sides. This project is a disgrace to the people of Redondo Beach, and to say that CenterCal has done their due diligence in reaching out to the community is disgraceful. The fact that they don't have the model here in the city of Redondo Beach is proof they're doing everything in this community to keep it from the residents. Elected officials, city staff echoing CenterCal's talking points is disgraceful. My major concerns are that the tall parking structure blocks views, the fact that the space, that each commercial space is so large that you're intentionally trying to push out small businesses in our city. This project is larger than the Manhattan Beach Mall, the Point Riviera Village, and the traffic will increase to a rate that's unbearable and compromises the quality of life. Our city is not invested in a general plan, and therefore, the city has not adequately planned for this development. Secondly, this council's not able to make an unbiased decision. The mayor's appearing in a promo video and has a pro-waterfront sign in his home. Council Member Horvath's campaign has CenterCal's fingerprints all over it. Who do you think you're kidding? How can you make an unbiased decision on this? I urge you to vote yes and honor the community's concerns and support this appeal. Thank you.
Thank you. Jose Alonso Hermosillo there? Okay. About Marquis Huff? Okay. Joseph Tonsel? Jonathan Santos? Ricardo Cabrera? Brian Mapia? Jose Lopez? Gary Parker? Dean Francois? There you go. Saw you back there.
Good evening, my name's Dean Francois, longtime Redondo resident. I've been involved in this process quite a while. I remember 15 years ago, opposing the heart of the city, and it's just come around and around, and we just can't seem to get it right yet. And you know, the Harbor Commission meeting that I saw, I mean, two Harbor Commissioners voted against it, a third stated that, you know, "We'll leave it up to the council, it's going to get appealed anyway." I mean, I don't know what kind of direction we're going in this city, but it's really sad. I worked on Sierra Club comments, and it was provided to the EIR, and it's very detailed with a lot of issues, but I'm going to focus on four right now. And if you, council members, could focus on these four issues, maybe we can get somewhere with a plan of action in the harbor here to get this project moving forward, so that people don't have to vote for the initiative that's coming up. So the four major issues are the public view of the water and how it's blocked by development, the bicycle path issues and circulation, the disastrous road going through the middle of the project, and the seaside lagoon impacts. Now, of prime importance is the Coastal Act and the public views of the water, and the fact that the Coastal Act and the zoning requires the development preserve and enhance public views of the water. Now, the Zooligor Park in the EIR, they came up with a few artificially favorable spots to monitor the aspect of what's going to happen to the view, but there are other parts of the park that they didn't even take a look at, and that's just the park itself. You've got Harbor Drive. Now, one can say, "Well, there isn't much of a water view on Harbor Drive," but at least the water view that's there needs to be protected. That's in the Coastal Act. Not only is that, but the Coastal Act says all public places, that means public roads and any public park. And you've got streets on Hondo and Cornelia and Diamond that go down and look. Now, we don't know if the project is going to interfere with the public views of the water up there, but you'd think that we would look at it, and the EIR should have looked at it, to figure out whether it is or not. If you can address that in itself, that is going to make a major impact on what happens. Now, with regards to the bike path, and Jim White did a good job of explaining how the bike path is going to crisscross three times, you know, we spent a lot of money to get the bike path on the water side of Harbor Drive, and now it's going to cross back two, three times against traffic and everything? That's totally ridiculous for a bike path. And under construction, it takes two and a half years, the bike path and walk path will be diverted up and around Catalina in the backside of the village. For two and a half years, and it'll be maybe three or four by the time this is over? I mean, and the Harbor Commission asked, you know, "Why can't this be addressed?" "Oh, well, you know, maybe we can do it sometimes," but then put it in the EIR. The same thing, the Harbor Drive also addressed, "Well, what's up with the, why does the bike path have to..." "Oh, it won't fit." "Well, if it fits on one side of Harbor Drive, it ought to fit on the other." The fact that it won't fit, I mean, it's just, these empty answers that are done are just, it's inconceivable that this thing is really going to go through like that. And the road, the road going through the middle of the harbor, that's kind of ridiculous. And the seaside lagoon, you know, at high tide, you're not going to have a beach anymore. I have a letter from the Sierra Club, I'd like to have received and filed, and I'll send that to you as soon as I have it in my stack. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our people, you know, we're running through this pretty nicely now, so let's, don't disrespect everybody else in the room and go over your time, please. Okay, is Mimi Razicki here? And how about Greg Razicki? David Goodman? Tasha Hinchliffe? Robert Gregory? Moses Ramler? Is Robert here? Oh, there you are, Robert.
Here.
What are you doing? And Moses, you're up next.
Hello, everybody, Mayor, council. I'm Robert Gregory, live in Torrance, learned to sail in Redondo Beach, right there in front of the yacht club, Mall B. I want to urge an opposition to the ramp at Mall B and move the ramp instead to Mall C for two main reasons. One is safety, actually, they're both safety. One, as you probably know, there are many young people sailing right there, and more than ever, we have stand-up paddleboarders coming out of that channel, we have boaters coming out of that channel. And to have young people and sabbats and optimists and small dinghies running back and forth, and then boats coming in, and now boats launching, trailer boats launching right there on that blind corner. blind corner, it's dangerous. Somebody's going to get run over. And I know something about safety. I left Northrop years ago in my engineering job and I went and became a teacher. So, for two decades now, I've been teaching Hawthorne Schools and Ellie Unified. And I take my sailing passion and I put that into bringing kids and Boy Scouts down to the water. And so, we've got high schoolers down there in the water. And during the summers, I'm a professional sea captain. I run the tall ships down in San Pedro, I'm one of their relief captains. And so, we're constantly focused on keeping our boats and keeping young people from hitting other boats. And so, when I look at that corner and I think of bringing a boat in there or my own three sons who are down there sailing with their Boy Scout group down there, it's a very crowded corner and I just see potential accidents there if the Mole B boat ramp goes through. And so, I urge serious consideration about moving the boat ramp to Mole C. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert.
All right. Good evening. My name is Moses Ramler, president of Outrigger Lonaquila Commute Club, Redondo Beach resident. Thank you, Mayor, Council, staff, for being here. You know, this project is very touchy, obviously, very polarized. Lonaquila is a nonprofit organization. We focus on recreational boat use in the harbor. We are located on Mole B, which pulls us into this mess. And we're not really looking to be a part of either side. It's a tough pull. I don't want to be worried about the boat ramp. I don't want to be worried about the revitalization. The revitalization has to happen to some extent. The boat ramp has to happen at some extent. But we are a community and this is a very small community. Maybe it seems big, but it's not that big. We have a lot of people here who have objections to what's going on and we have a lot of leaders that have to make tough decisions. Our leaders have to be accountable, they have to be responsible, and they have to make strong decisions moving forward. Lonaquila wants to be a community player. We want to help work with the city. We have been working with the staff to create a better position for us on Mole B with or without a boat ramp. Is there safety issues? Yeah. Are there traffic issues? Sure. Parking issues? Maybe. We don't really know. What we do know is we're about the most experienced boaters down there. We're on the water all the time. If you're going to put it somewhere, we're going to be able to navigate around it. I'm a little disappointed at the indifference in some of the other key players out there. Where are the other boaters that live right next door to us, the stand-up people that have businesses running right through there? I'm not sure where they are, but I can tell you that they should be here and they should be making some kind of opinion. And it's now up to you guys to maybe pull this thing back, have us all work together and work out a slightly better situation because both sides are good and this is a community and we cannot have it fractured. Thank you.
Thanks, Moses. Roberto Torres. Andy Shelby. Candace Grace. Chris Battingle. Julian Harvey. Ronald Troop.
Jess Money, District Three. It's appropriate that these proceedings tonight are being videotaped because this isn't a council meeting and it's not an appeal hearing, it's a GEICO commercial. It opens with the City Council ramming through an unpopular, economically unsound, high-density proposal using a deliberately biased and flawed EIR. And then, the GEICO voiceover says, because it's what you do. When the Heart of the City came through in 2001, the EIR was so flawed that the city of Hermosa sued against it in court. A year later, when they brought Heart of the City back under the name Catalina Corridor because of the Hermosa lawsuit against the previous EIR, they went back 12 years to a EIR that was still technically within the legal timeframe, but it was so obsolete that it still included Maricosta High School in the Redondo School District. Now, why would this happen over a period of time? One thing is, one possible answer is, council members are stupid. But there've been 15 council members and three mayors in that period of time, not including Bill Brand, and so, statistical probability says they can't all be dumb. Second possibility is corruption, which is sadly, not out of the question, but I think the real one is number three. The real reason is stubborn. This is a power contest. This is winning for winning's sake and the council and the chamber and the developers don't care about facts or the 7,000, or almost 7,000 signatures that were on the CARE Initiative. Ask yourself, what other city would do this? Malibu? No way. Manhattan Beach? Not on your life. I point out that in Santa Monica, it's the Third Street Promenade, not the oceanfront Promenade. Newport Fashion Island is neither an island nor in the harbor. The Redondo Triangle, Crown Plaza Development has never returned a single penny to the city of Redondo from tax increment financing and it won't pay off the Tideland's loan till the year 2040. So, tonight, you're going to rubber stamp the EIR, we're going to file a lawsuit, we're going to win the lawsuit, you're going to spend a lot of the taxpayers' money and then blame the public because, like the ad says, it's what you do. But unlike GEICO, we're not willing to settle for 15%. We want 100% of our harbor's potential.
Thank you. Carl Pelicky. Okay. Betty Middlebrooks. Lori Glover. Bibi Goldstein. Linda Buffington. No, it's not you. Okay. Okay. Your K, I'm good.
Kay Gagnon, Opal Street. So, I was here four years ago when the developer was selected and not committed to. And I want to thank all the folks up here for stepping forward to lead and I really want you to steel your resolve to make sure we get this right. 32 years as an aerospace engineer, retired. I once had a boss that said, sometimes you have to go slow to go fast. That actually infuriated me the first time I heard that, but I realized, you know what? Sometimes you've got to go slow to go fast. I think we've been going slow for four years. I attended many of the public hearings and I'm not seeing a reflection of the input that was received with the product that we have right now. So, I don't think we have it right. I read a lot in the paper about there's a minority of folks that don't like this. I walked the streets, I went to meetings, and I hear a lot of people that are just mostly ignorant, don't know what's going on. And then, when they really start understanding the facts, they're alarmed, they're not happy. But as leaders, what I'm here to appeal to you is really think about the vision. One of the things I love about Redondo Beach is people stop and actually watch the sunset. I lived in Manhattan Beach for 28 years. People don't stop and watch the sunset. Where's the value in that? I don't know. It's up to you. But I think, I see the people here in Redondo Beach stop and watch the sunset. My kids, I raised two sons in Manhattan Beach. The happiest days of their life was the day before the hometown fair. Why? Because they had open space. So, that's a value that only leaders can provide. You have a very finite piece of the Pacific Ocean to protect. Leaders before you chose a developer that knows how to do a mall and that's what we're seeing. I don't see a reflection of what I hear most of the people in Redondo Beach talk about. Two points that I'm most concerned about, traffic. I don't believe the mitigations will handle the traffic. I lived through the commute from Manhattan Beach to El Segundo. My commute was doubled by the development on Rosecrans since Sepulveda, doubled. Now, granted, I had a seven-minute commute, but it was bad. And you need to really look at that. I don't think you're getting the right facts with the traffic and I don't think the business case makes any sense. I think the city is taking on all the risk and the developer is getting all the gains. I'd urge you to look, work with contracting officials and make sure you've got this right because the dollars and cents just don't make sense.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that. And then, Lynn Zino after that.
All right, thank you. Good evening. My name is Andrea Jorgens and I live in the avenues and I'm fairly new to this game and conversation. I've been a stand-up paddleboarder out through our harbor for the last 10 years and have lived here for 17. And there's just a couple of things that I want to bring to the attention as I am concerned about the development. I do want to see something new, but I don't want the depth or the height of that. Two things, I worry about the change and how the waterfront and the lagoon will be used. I actually really do enjoy the seaside lagoon and find it a playful place. I am concerned about what waterfront in the harbor will look like for my daughter to swim and play as I do leave through that marina and I don't see that as being a clean harbor then to play in. I feel that the lagoon is a safe place for my daughter to roam with her friends. She is nine years old. The second thing is that I'm concerned with, as I go out into the water and see all those seals, and I'm very familiar with what's happened in Lojaya and the abilities to use that beachfront and then being able to use the beachfront that is designed in the new proposed setup. I just don't see that as a place that my daughter can go to and I'm afraid it will be overtaken by other animals versus humans. The other thing I'm worried about is just being able to use the bike lanes and to see the water as we bike to the beach. I don't want it to look like a corridor of cement. I'm not happy with how shade Hotel has built that huge cement wall and I'm concerned about what that view will look like. Lastly, I am concerned about how I will get my paddleboard and my daughters now kayak to the water and to move through that flow. I want to reconsider what that will look like for my children and the children that live on Inez Avenue and what they want from the water. I hope that when you look at redesigning, if that possibility comes to fruition, that you remember that we have an opportunity to keep something that is open and free to move and that's easy to get through. And I just don't want to see the heights. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Lynn Zino.
Lynn Zino, District One. When the Center Cal people did the presentation, they talked about how this was, one of their primary purposes was for young kids. And to me, what I see is that this proposal has no more seaside lagoon. And people disagree and say, oh, no, it's just moved over here. Well, no, it's not what it was. It used to be a lake where you could enter, small kids could wade in with no worry about getting splashed and pushed over and older kids could go over on the other side where they can jump in. And it was a 360-degree entry point on a very large lagoon. Now, what I see is this little tiny crescent that, you know, small kids are supposed to play in. It seems a little dangerous, it's not fenced off, and now paddleboarders and kayakers are also launching from that site. If you've ever been to seaside lagoon in the summertime, it is mobbed with kids from camp who can just let loose and go. And I don't see how camps can run there anymore. You'd be way too afraid to lose kids in an unsecured situation like that. So, that's, I feel like you've lost seaside lagoon. You've had more like an ornament for the hotel than a lagoon for the kids to play in. So, you're really throwing that away and I'm not sure people see that. Also, when they talk about moving the boat launch to Mole B, as I understand, there's a large crew of kids that love paddling right there and all of a sudden, to have amateur boaters launching right there, it's like, what are we thinking? I thought this whole stretch was supposed to be recreation for Redondo and I feel like it's this large development pushing it out and I can take my kids to an expensive ice cream up there now, but, you know, are they going to have recreational access anymore by what we're doing? So, I just want people to consider that before we put this large development in and have, you know, Santa Monica stores come down instead of, I love the village. If I have friends come from out of town, we go to Riviera Village and have a great time. We walk the Esplanade, it's peaceful and beautiful and it's not the crazed, you know, multi-story parking structure, you know, site that I can't see putting a paddleboard or a canoe in this parking structure. So, I just feel like the orientation is really towards this development and I'd like it to be more towards recreation in the area. Thank you.
Lynn. Okay, Arnette Travis and then Jessica Travis.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Staff. Just a prelude to my comments is that I just arrived back in Redondo Beach tonight from the Blue Zone Summit where it was the best kumbaya moment I've ever had. And I come back to the divisiveness that has become our community because of this project. It's kind of a letdown, but let me go back to a history lesson since there's been several of them tonight. One of them are having to deal with what our waterfront was. Our waterfront was and still is a commercial concern. It is not a mall, it will never be a mall. The Center Cal proposal, which I happen to know quite well just from wanting to know what was going to be done in our harbor, what the plans were, I think it's an absolutely beautiful plan. 20% retail, and I'm not in that business, is not a mall. It is a mixture of mixed use, most notably with the water access or enhanced water access and certainly enhanced views, which right now, I don't think anyone stands in the middle of a parking lot to view the ocean. There's nowhere to sit, there's nowhere to have a drink or anything. You're in the middle of a parking lot. That's what's there. It's very disturbing, the level of disrespect that people have for government officials. I assume that anyone who aspires to City Council, particularly in Redondo Beach, has a pretty thick skin. And if you don't, you certainly would need to grow one because the arrows are coming at you from a lot of different ways. I do want to address one other thing and that is the lack of a plan. There's a lot of tearing down of the Center Cal proposal, proposed project, but I haven't seen any alternate solution. I haven't seen other developers or anyone coming forth with a plan or with money to get it done. So, when we talk about taxpayers being abused potentially, what about the 37 and a half to 108 million by the city estimates that taxpayers in Redondo Beach will be on the hook for if we don't get this done? Please do not. Please deny the appeal and let's move forward.
Thank you. And now Jessica Travis. Daza Cassoni. Tony Trutanis Jr.
To set the record straight, Old Tony's Crow's Nest is not falling into the ocean. As someone stated, they might have had too many fire chiefs.
Maybe.
That tends to be a side effect of, you know, all right, anyways. I'm here representing the Facebook page, Redondo Harbor Boardwalk and Marketplace, which has 17,000 people that have liked the page in favor of it. Also here representing Gene Trutanis, Mike Trutanis, my sister Donna Sebastian, and about 11 other long-term employees of Old Tony's, which equals 685 combined years of employment down on the pier. We are all in favor of the Center Cal development. Think it'll be a good thing. We like that Center Cal is a local company. People keep stating that, you know, they're going to do this and move away, but they're a local company and, you know, the owners enjoy that area. People often state, you know, they want to protect that view from Harbor Drive, which, you know, I videotaped it and shown that, you know, it's pretty tough to see the ocean from Harbor Drive. But what they're missing is, is that after the development is created, the views that are being opened up to people that, you know, the view that's going to come is going to be much greater than the view from Harbor Drive. You're now going to have a view from, you know, right there in the ocean with the new boardwalk and stuff. So 680 years combined employment, years down there at the pier, we all support it, and we think it's a good project, and Old Tony's supports it also. Thank you.
Thank you. Erica Robinson.
Hey, Mayor and City Council people. My name is Erica Snow Robinson, and I'm a Redondo Beach resident since 1998, and I'm a paddleboarder, and I'm a boat owner in the...
Portofino Marina.
Sorry, I am a zombie, standing up here practically asleep. Okay, so let me just start with the fact that I'm a little ticked off about the recusal of Bill Brand, which we all know is political posturing. And so now, do I not only, I haven't had any representation of this project or any for the however long he's been my councilman, because I don't happen to agree with him and he has that whole deal. But now, I literally don't have any representation, because he's recusing himself. So I'm here to speak for myself. I understand he's still not recusing himself behind closed doors, and so he's privy to all sorts of things. But anyways, I just want to say that I love it, I want it, I think it's awesome, I can't wait to see it. Talk about moving slow. Well, you know, 16 years since we did Heart of the City, we, I don't know how many years we've been waiting for something, and I think it's going to be great. I really hope y'all deny the appeal, and, and I hope that we all remember, people like Mickey Marafino is a private citizen and can do anything she wants to talk about the project or whatever. Who cares who she works for? She's still a private citizen, it's a Redondo Beach resident. And if that's going to be an issue, then why the heck aren't we all up in arms over elected officials like Mr. Sam Arco here, who is elected, but he does his political consulting work and for Row or BBR, whoever? Or the elected official, Bill Brand, who's only sending out letters to his constituents that agree with him. I don't get anything from him, and he's only sending out letters to people that agree with him, and it's all about, you know, vote against it and stop it and do this, and so why is that okay? And what else do I want to say?
You better hurry then.
Okay. You know what? Oh, and I'm proud of our Redondo Beach Chamber, who actually brings tourism and dollars and entertainment to our city and actually helps businesses, while my own city councilman seems to only want to spread misinformation and ensure the businesses are too scared to approach Redondo with new ventures. And I think that's it. Yay, go waterfront!
Alicia came in under the timeline, okay? Cheryl, Cheryl Shear? Okay, thank you. Okay.
By the way, I do not work for Row or BBR, just to set the record straight.
Okay. I think you're going to answer false accusations, so I should start too. Okay, Joseph, uh...
Kettle Black.
Herzina?
Josephine.
Joseph? Josephine? Okay, come on up.
Hi, my name is Josephine Herzina, a resident of Redondo Beach, District Three. And I generally am a listener, and I've been coming to a lot of these council meetings and a lot of the other meetings and listening. And as I listen, I hear a lot of good things on both sides. There are a lot of things about Center Cal that have presented some very, very nice ideas, some things that we could incorporate, other things I've heard not so good. With the appeal that Mr. Light has presented, he has given us a lot of thought, a lot of facts, things that need to be considered, not to be rushed through. I believe Mr. Solomon also presented a lot of ideas that we need to think about. Also, what Martin Holmes presented, as far as the economics of the project, need to be considered. We want to revitalize, absolutely. We do not want to supersize. We need to move on this. Everybody's worried about is going, oh, we've got to get it done, we've got to do it now. But that's like anything, that all of a sudden you say, oh, gosh, I think I'll remodel my house. And I speak now from experience at this moment. You start off fast, you make a lot of mistakes, you end up having to do it over. So let's really look at this and not rush into having this oversized development on our waterfront. We have a wonderful harbor, and the ocean is an incredible gift. Let's take care of it, and let's really consider what we're doing. I absolutely support the appeal, and I'm against the Center Cal project as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening, Joanne Gallin, District Three. And I just got back from the Dodger game, and the Dodgers won 6-0. So if anybody cares about that, good game. Anyway, I, as I said, I live in District Three. I'm a big supporter of doing something down at the waterfront. I mean, I spend so much of my money and time in other cities as Hermos and Manhattan, which is great. It's all the South Bay, I love the South Bay, but I would love to spend more time in Redondo. It's falling apart, we need to do something. Center Cal has a great plan. You know, we might not all be for 100% of it, but they're a great company, they're good people, and I really support it, and I'm going to make this short and sweet, but thank you. Good night, everybody.
Thank you. That happens to be our last written request. So anybody, if I may have called their name, I'm not going to go through the list again. If they're not here, I'm not going to read what they wrote, but now it's open mic night, so come on down if you have, come on up.
My name's Sean Carroll, I'm District One, I'm a native.
What's your last name?
Carroll, C-A-R-R-O-L-L.
Thank you.
Redondo Beach is a bedroom community, and a lot of people had to go home, but I know they vote, so. I came down here, I'd heard a rumor that if this fails, some of the structures could be turned into housing. Is that a possibility? The hotel or the parking structures or the structures that are built? Could that be a backwards way to put housing on the beach down there? Yeah? No loophole for them to come back? I'm not going to come back here and 10 years, efforts failed, and we have a big white whale sitting there, and the council's going, man, we can sell these as condos? No?
You know, they can answer questions when this is over.
Oh, okay, okay, I didn't know exactly what I was asking. Okay. But another thing I wanted to talk about is Mole C. I go through there every day, go through the pier with the Center Cal, and the first six items they had, I'm 100% for them. But when they go beyond that, the structure's just way too big. I think I'd have to go with the guy, Bill here, the rest of the way. As you go through traffic down Harbor and you turn down to Mole C, I go through there every day sometimes, so I sit there. And it's, it's an accident, I've seen several accidents, probably almost an accident sometimes every go, because people can't turn into the restaurants because of the bike path. Guy stops in the center turn lane, stops too soon, the guy behind him stops, he's in the lane. You can't get down the lane. When you go to Mole C, when you turn in the street, I've taken two lights to get from the guardhouse out, because it's so slow getting out there. When you put boats in there and the guys pulling trailers, when they start to go down to the Moonstone Park, and you're having, guys in there parking, they're living there or parked their boats, and they're trying to get a guy on a trailer, they're not going to wait, there's going to be some confrontation, there's going to be trouble, is what I think. Then you go down to Moonstone Park, it's a bad deal. I think that they should put where the boat ramps are, where the hoists are, I used to have a boat, used to drop it till I got a slip, put the two hoists there across from Najas. As you exit the harbor, they put in a dock, a couple of big boats there, there's a shed there, put another hoist right there, you can pull it right there by the restaurant, drop, drop the boat, put a boat ramp right there, drop it in, and your flow goes out into the parking lot, they got the big spots right there for people already, have always parked their boats and their trailers.
Okay.
But, you know, as far as supersizing the thing, in the pier, we have a pier, we have a, you know, mall, the Galleria, we have the Village, and the pier, they all have open spaces. I don't think over, you know, supersizing is going to help.
Okay, thanks, Sean.
But I love, I love the revitalizing plan, I love this guy right here. That's what we need, you know?
Thanks.
I go through it every day, I'd like to see it nice.
Appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ian Bardine from Redondo Beach. Contrary to the opening statements by staff, we are here tonight because Chairperson Bloss of the Harbor Commission abdicated her fiduciary responsibility to make a decision based on meaningful consideration by passing the issue to this council without consideration of extensive, of extensive public and cogent comment to the contrary. Her rationale being that it will end up before the city council anyway. I ask that this body not follow Commissioner Bloss's lack of leadership and listen to and heed public comment. There is an adage in law that says, when a gnat swallows an elephant, it takes on the characteristics of the elephant. In this case, the harbor is the gnat, Center Cal is the elephant. Let's not take on this huge conglomerate for our nice quaint harbor. Now, also, with respect to something that was said, I had the fortune of sitting down and meeting with councilperson Barbie shortly after she took the, her seat here. She is not a rubber stamp, so whoever thought otherwise, I disagree. Let's not build another high rail, or start another high-speed rail project that will lead to nothing. Also, one final statement that I think was said, or was mentioned, is that this is an appeal. Jim Light put on a cogent, well-stated appeal. The only opposition that was said by the respondent is how nice this place is going to look, how it's going to revitalize, et cetera. Nobody ever answered the charges or the points of the appeal brought up by Mr. Light. So in consideration of the appeal, we have a good appeal, we have absolutely no logical opposition to it, and I hope that the council will take that into account. Finally, I think I'm the person that helped that previous speaker get a straight answer from Mr. Bruning when asked about, is it an all or nothing project?
Cool.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Second? Is there a second? Okay, go ahead.
Good evening, City Council, Mayor, City Staff, great people of Redondo Beach, Nils Narenham, District One. Theme tonight is commercialization of the harbor over recreational and commercial coastal dependent uses. Seaside lagoon, why do we need to pave over a third of the seaside lagoon? Physically paving over the seaside lagoon? Why are we opening up the seaside lagoon to dirty harbor water? Specifically, in the water quality test, the staff report said the Hyperion plume was, in 2015, was supposed to cause our bad water quality. That's not true. There's a SCUZ report that I emailed to you earlier that specifically showed that that plume had nothing to do with the water quality in King Harbor. Boat ramp, multiple safety professionals, multiple boaters such as myself, continue to say that Mole B is unsafe. Mole B location and boat launch room location is geared towards motorboats, not sailboats. That's important, because sailboats need to tack in and out of the working channel to get onto the boat launch ramp. That's not conducive to a safe boat launching situation for sailboats. You're now using the channel as a south, channel as a turning basin. The answer here is using the south turning basin. Why are the recreational uses being minimized and the commercial uses being maximized in this design? Staff says this is largely compatible. Why not fully compatible? Everywhere in this plan, you see deferred mitigation. I've asked not once, not twice, but multiple times, three, four times, where is the marine mammal baitment plan? The seals are going to come up on the beaches, the city staff continually saying that we'll deal with it when it comes up. That's deferred mitigation. Parking, it's all shared parking. I keep hearing about we're going to be dealing with parking later at another time. We'll deal with parking at this location or that location at another time. But at the end of the day, that's deferred mitigation. Earlier this evening, the city staff talked about community-driven Measure G. But Measure G was a city-driven document. This right here is a community, King Howard Care Act, community-driven document. Multiple visions, thousands of communications with the public. This right here, which got nearly 7,000 signatures, is a community-driven document. Where does that lie in this King Harbor plan? Lastly, we keep talking about bias. There's lawn signs on people's lawns and ports that don't belong, there's speeches that people have been given, video appearances and donations that have been given. At the end of the day, this is public property for private profits. How are we, the public, benefiting with this massive oversized mall? Again, it comes down to over-commercialization. We don't want Santa Monica here in Redondo, that's why we live here in Redondo, to get away from that. Thank you very much. Please approve this appeal, send it back to the Harbor Commission, have a great night.
Okay.
Hi, thanks for having me this evening. I'm Jessica Bar-
I'm Jessica Barra from Abass Kitchen. We're very lucky to own a small business on the waterfront. And I want to also say thank you to the IT person for putting this all online, because we've been able to watch from our homes.
Right.
We're residents of District One, and our business is in District Two. So, I wanted to say thank you to both sides, because I've been able to learn a lot this evening. I really respect how far the Center Cal plan has come. I think they've taken into account the things, you know, the comments, the negative comments, and just being able to watch what their architects and designers has come up with is, you know, far improved. At the same time, we're also concerned, because every day we have people coming in and say, "What are you gonna do? What are you gonna do when the waterfront comes?" And the truth is, we don't know. So, we also want to appeal to you as our landlord, and us as rent-paying tenants, that, you know, there's just transparency, or there's some kind of plan, so that we know, you know, something's gotta happen with that area, it needs to be fixed up for sure. But we'd love to be part of helping it make, you know, become a better place. And I think the one unifying thing about all of us being here at 11 o'clock at night is that we care. We really care about the community. And, you know, we might have differing views on how to, you know, change it, but it, you know, needs to evolve, and we all want it to get better, so, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay.
Mary Ann Guthrie, Marina Cove Limited, we're the owners and operators of King Harbor Marina. I'd like to keep my comments to the Mole B boat launch location. We have spent probably the last two and a half years discussing the logistics of putting the boat ramp in King Harbor. And there have been public workshops to discuss what's the best location for the boat launch, I know, 'cause I've attended them. And, you know, the testimony that you've heard, you know, one of the things that came out of that workshop was that there's really not a great location for the ramp, because what should have happened is, many, many years ago, 50 years ago, 60 years ago, when the harbor was designed, there should have been a boat ramp, and the harbor designed around that, but that didn't happen. But King Harbor Marina is putting forth a renovation plan of our entire marina, and that will enable us to build our marina around the Mole B boat launch. And so, we've been working very carefully and diligently with the city, and also our subtenant, particularly Tarzan Stand-Up Paddleboard, to talk about moving their launch location, because if there's a concern of boaters and paddleboarders all leaving and entering Basin One, we can reduce that traffic. We could reduce that traffic with a redesigned marina. We could reduce the traffic by moving the boat launch, excuse me, the Tarzan SUP launch from our dock, which is in Basin One, over to Basin Two. And so, we also, there was a question about the parking. Marina Cove Limited hired an independent consultant to look at the parking on a very active weekend in July, and then, most recently. And we've submitted the parking consultant's analysis to the Harbor Commission. And it turned out that we have a surplus of parking, certainly not on the Fourth of July, and certainly not on certain days. But on most days, you could literally shoot a cannon off in our parking lot and not hit anybody. And so, some of the testimony was, "Well, though, gosh, there's 60 days a year that, you know, it's gonna be impacted." We are a boat-tyke harbor. We don't know what it's going to be, because we don't have the boat launch. That being said, if there's 60 days that could be impacted, well, gosh, there's 300 days that it's not. So, you know, we run a marina, we encourage to have boats launch in the harbor. We also have, from 2010, year in, year out, month in, month out, we have 60 vacant slips in the marina. And those slips are all under that 30-foot category. So, the boating community has changed. We have data that we can provide that it's not going to change. We've endured those vacancies for a very long time. So, what we're thinking is, is if we have a-
Thanks, Mary Ann.
Oh, thank you, good night.
Thank you, okay. Anybody else come on, anybody's welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Aspel, City Council members. My name is Marziki Jermo from District One. I'm here today to tell you how sad it is to see the residents coming to you and providing concerns. And it appears that, and I hope you listen to them, and before you make a decision, you digest all their concerns that they have indicated. And compromise. I would appreciate that you perhaps don't even make a decision today, but take the time to analyze all their concerns and the data. It is sad to see that perhaps the destiny of our harbor may need to be decided by lawyers rather than water expert architects or the likes. My major concerns are traffic, noise, parking, and transition from the project to the nearby neighborhood. Putting dedicated turnlights on Pacific Coast Highway lanes and removing trees. I don't believe that's the answer, Mr. Aaron Jones. So, please, I kindly request that you take the time to digest the information, the concerns, the suggestions that the residents have provided, and listen to them and make a decision. Everybody agrees that we have to do something with that harbor, there is no doubt about it. So, this is a time for you to show that you care for your constituents and work with us. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Sean Guthrie.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members, staff, and fellow citizens. Sean Guthrie, I also work for one of the managing partners of Marina Cove Limited, runs King Harbor Marina, but I'm also a lifelong resident. And I actually lived about 20 years of my life in the harbor, so I know it about as well as anybody, having grown up around there. And first off, I want to thank you very much for your service and contribution to this community. I mean, this is tough work up there, and you don't get paid much for doing it. As pointed out earlier, that revitalization of the waterfront began over decades ago, actually, approximately 60 years ago. But what wasn't mentioned is that since before Redondo was even a city, that land was all privately owned and developed up until about 60 years ago, when the city acquired it. So, this notion that it's like been public land forever is not true. And in the process of that revitalization that began back then, when they were building the harbor, they borrowed a large amount of money, and they bonded the city and actually defaulted on those bonds. And some people that are around back that long could attest to that. I haven't seen Pat Ost tonight, but he could talk about that. And it was entrepreneurs like my father that came here and took a huge risk and helped actually the city retire those bonds. And so, you know, here you've got Center Cal, who's put together an exceptional team to help out the city out of another hole, where the infrastructure is deteriorated. And so, the question becomes is, do we want, as a community, you know, bond ourselves again and put ourselves into debt that hopefully we can pay for? Or, you know, allow private enterprises to come in and take care of that? So, I think that's a great option, and so, I think, you know, especially 60 years in the making, that it's time to move forward, and so, I recommend to denial the appeal, and let's get on with it. Thank you so much for your talk.
Thank you. Who's next? Not gonna beg ya, it's 11:30, come on down. We're gonna close this thing up.
But I'm the little note-taker tonight.
You don't have to fight to be the last people.
No. Good evening, Council, Mayor. I did the tedious job of taking a tally on pros, I mean, yays and nays of support in this appeal. And it stands at 14 to 30. 14 are, want you to grant this, are in favor of the appeal, I mean, it's kinda backwards. 30 are in favor of the appeal, meaning turn this down. And 14 want you to accept Center Cal's project as it is. So, with that being said, there have been statements made by council members that say they want to do what the majority of the residents want. Everything's been said tonight, I can't say anything more profound or more, you know, more to-the-point, professional, you know. Everybody's said it, they've been quite, quite, um, quite accurate in their statements. I mean, it's been obvious, the history, the research, and everything. So, I'm gonna leave you with the statistics and know that I'm supporting Row and their decision in fighting this as it stands. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Hello.
My name is Gina Di Pietro, and I'm from District One. And I was really hoping that this project would include a contract for our Redondo Beach Police Department. I had the great opportunity to talk to two Torrance police officers last night, and both of them expressed to me how they had wished that the Simon Mall had had a contract with them before it was taken over. And then also, I was actually at home painting when a gentleman came up and did the Warhol, the Andy Warhol quote, where he said something about, "I think having land and not ruining it is the most beautiful art that anybody could ever want to own." And I totally disagreed with the gentleman who said that, "Oh, he didn't mean anything about that's being commercial." 'Cause, let's face it, what we have are views that are more significant than what they will be after a development that raises the buildings. And so, from my perspective, and from somebody who's been doing pop art at home and was covered in oil paint like just 25 minutes ago, you know, I happen to disagree, but, you know, we could go on and on about Andy Warhol if we really wanted to. But that also brings up another point, 'cause Andy Warhol was a little bit ahead of his time in terms of the look of what he was doing. And this whole development is archaic. There's brick, brick in Southern California. I go to Michigan and Ohio if I wanna see, Ohio, that's right, Ohio, I guess, if I wanna see brick. Brick doesn't even make sense with an earthquake zone in Southern California, even if it's just a facade brick, it's still brick. We need to be thinking big, not backwards. And by big, I mean in terms of incorporating the ecosystem and the landscape, the vision of our natural landscape within the structure of the architecture, so that it makes sense. And so that it's ahead of its time, instead of looking like everywhere else, 'cause that is the worst thing that could happen in Redondo Beach. And I was really looking forward to hearing Fred Bruning tell his Matt Damon story, and I was so disappointed that he didn't do it tonight, so, thank you.
Okay.
With your permission, I'd like to make a submission.
Well, is there a motion?
Motion received.
Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor Aspel, City Council, City Staff, Mark Hanson, King Harbor Boater. I'm here this evening to recommend that the City Council uphold the provision of the appeal regarding not selecting the staff-recommended alternative for the boat ramp at Mole B, and rather, select Mole C as the location for the boat ramp. The leadership of the boating organizations in King Harbor were consulted regarding a boat ramp on Mole B versus the location on Mole C, which was preferred by the community during the eight waterfront meetings. The boating community identified 16 specific concerns with the functionality and safety of that location, most of which cannot be mitigated due to the very limited maneuvering water and limited land area. You've been provided with a copy of that list. I want to highlight the lack of navigable water for vessel staging during egress and ingress. Of course, at Mole C, there's direct access to the south turning basin, which is why that location has always been the focus for the boat ramp. Landside, there are only 32 onsite parking spaces. The Department of Boating and Waterways recommends 40 to 60 spaces for a two-lane ramp. The overflow spaces will be more than the DBW max of 600 feet from the ramp. Less than half of those spaces are the DBW recommended pull-through spaces. If we're going to violate three of the guidelines of the Boat and Boating Waterways, we're probably not gonna get a DBW grant, and we're probably not gonna get Coastal Commission approval. On Mole C, it's much easier to address and mitigate the concerns. Regarding landside traffic, the EIR accurately relays that the boat ramp adds negligible component to vehicular traffic. Traffic itself is not significant, as long as we have sufficient parking and a modest queuing lane. The most recent refined Mole C drawing of June 1st includes a depiction of such a queuing lane. Very unfortunately, the final EIR only includes drawings of two less refined concepts at Mole C that omit the queuing lane, and it does not include that most recent, most refined drawing. I want to touch briefly on demand. Our boat ramp could be very, very popular. We have immediate access to the open ocean, better access to Catalina the Marina Del Rey, and the best access to Rocky Point fishing. If our usage is similar to Cabrillo's with only 32 onsite parking places, we would be overcapacity 61 days out of the year. On the other hand, if we could bump up to around 60 spaces, we could handle that usage level on all but the 10 busiest days. I want to highlight that very recently, four of our boat rescue captains from both Redondo Harbor Patrol and the LA County Baywatch have opined that a ramp on Mole B would be unsafe. I think we've really, really gotta listen to that. Please note that an open, dedicated, public meeting was never held to discuss the boat ramp location on Mole B. We've talked primarily about Mole A and Mole C. Trust me, I was at every one of those meetings, we did not discuss Mole B, let's clear that one up. The combination of not having that Mole B discussion, and the very best Mole C drawing never being presented in the final EIR really puts the Harbor Commission in a tough spot. They're really deprived of the information they needed to make a fair evaluation of those two locations. And so, again, I want to recommend that you reject Mole B as a location for the boat ramp and select Mole C for a safe, effective boat ramp. Thank you.
Wow, you made it, okay. Anybody else? Mike, you haven't spoke yet. Okay, we're gonna close the public hearing for the public speakers.
No, no.
No, I know, but, okay, but-
We got the 30 minutes.
We're not gonna close the public hearing, we're gonna cut it off now, and we're gonna bring up- Right, we're gonna bring up Fred first, but I want to make a statement, well, we're gonna have- We're gonna have the break.
Yeah, just have a break now, and then it'll go-
But I don't wanna make a statement.
Mayor, just wait and have the, take a break now and have the appellate go, and then the applicant, because then you'll get into council questions.
Okay, cool, then we'll just wait, and so, anybody else, no one wants to speak? Okay, we're taking a break. Hopefully not that long, please, so. Number five minutes.
It's like it's me somewhere. Oh, yeah, right, yeah. They forgot to send you a check.
Someone get Christian. We need Christian.
I don't know why my staff did.
I don't know. It looks like they got some really sleepy print there tomorrow. I didn't look at it.
Hey, Aaron, would you find Christian?
Tell them we're waiting.
Christian.
Okay.
We lit, we're on, we live.
There you go.
Everybody, please take a seat.
Thank you all for sticking around.
Okay, we are going to now give a half hour to Fred Bruning. You come up first.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, again, thank you so much for your patience tonight. First of all, I'd like to say that I really respect everybody's opinion here today, both people supporting our project and those who have problems with what we're presenting. I do have complete faith in the vision of our project. I know that it will be a success for the city of Redondo Beach. We, I've heard a lot of interesting things. I've heard people talk about contributions that we've never made and things like that. I won't go into details about that, but I will say, there's one thing I heard today that I know is a complete fabrication. Someone accused me of doing something sexy. And my wife will tell you.
I need to write that down, don't worry about it.
I think it had to do with a Photoshop, but I would object to that. A couple comments. When we received the staff report for tonight's meeting, we read through the response to the appeal. We found ourselves in agreement with the staff report, so rather than reiterate what was mentioned by staff early on, we thought it would be important to present to the council our vision for the project. You know, honestly, we've not had a chance to do that before as a body, although several of you have been to our office and have seen the model and heard our feelings about the project. We feel very strongly that we have a great project for the city of Redondo Beach. We feel it's a project that is sustainable, that is based on sound science and logic, that is actually one where we are taking the bulk of the risk. And you know, sometimes when I hear that we're going to walk away from the project after investing several hundred million dollars, I wonder sometimes how that is helpful to us. But really, what it comes down to is, we believe now's the time to make a decision on the project. I've never asked a council member or the mayor how you're going to vote on this project. The only thing I've ever done is said, the only thing I'd ask you to do is vote for the project you believe is in the best interest of the city of Redondo Beach. And I believe that very wholeheartedly. If this is not the project that's right for the city, we shouldn't be here. But at the same time, it's time, I hope, that you'll be willing to make a decision because we think the project deserves one. Rather than take the whole half hour, I'd like to give as a gift to the council my quick adieu, and look forward to any questions you might have after the rebuttal session. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Come on up, Jim.
Thank you. I'm going to be at work at five, so this is a lot of fun. I appreciate all the comments from the public. I do want to cover some things. First off, you know, some people said we're for stagnation. That's not true. We're for revitalization. We just don't agree with the amount and the size of this project. A lot of us participated in all eight of the visioning sessions with CenterCal. We went in with great excitement. And actually, the first drawing, even though a lot of us didn't like it, ended up being the least impactful one, and ever since then, the project's been getting more and more impactful. And that's what's driven us to the CARE Initiative, which people have mischaracterized that, saying we're trying to stop this development. That's not true. We're trying to put in the balance that we think the city processes should have put in and that what we were promised in Measure G. And all it does is ask for proper parking, proper view prioritization, putting in the proper recreational development. So we're all for moving forward, but we want to do it more balanced. That was a nice, long marketing pitch that we got from CenterCal. For those of us who have participated in the processes, it feels like we've seen this pitch time and time and time again. This may have been 15 minutes longer or something like that. But if you could, there's a couple of things I'd like to address. Can you put up Mr. Bruning's slides? It's hard to rebut if I can't talk to the images that they showed. If you could go to somewhere around slide 27. Yeah, so this was the improved access, where they started talking about access for SUP ers, and I just wanted to show you that what they were saying isn't, wasn't quite accurate. Sure, there's a drop-off point there for the watercraft and small watercraft and pedestrians, but you can't walk straight down from there and go to the sand. You have to walk through that little gateway area that they show, statues and bands playing, depending on which version you see. Then you have to walk down on that lower sidewalk, the hardscape, take a left or a right, and then weed your way through shoppers and people at the concessions, and then make it to the ramp or the lagoon access side, and then you can finally get down there. They've never defined where the lockers would be. There's nothing there that shows any kind of lockers that they're saying would mitigate some of the problems with their access. So it's not as easy as they make it seem. Walking with a 14-foot board, negotiating 90-degree turns and stairways and things like that is not conducive to easy access. If you could go to the next slide, please. Yeah, keep going. Well, now, go back one. So, is it that hard to maneuver? So it's interesting, they show you the before and after, but what they don't show you on the after, that's a clever rendering, but if you look at their model, you'll see that that actually, what looks like an expansive beach, if you went out a degree to the left and to the right, you'd see a giant breakwater. And what you see is the background, which is, looks like it's mostly palm trees, is actually dominated by the big structures in the back. And when you look at it in their model, it doesn't have that depth of field like they show there. It looks like those buildings are right on top of you on the beach. So that's a very deceptive drawing. Next, if we could go, keep going. I'm looking for the one where they showed the distances you had to walk with your paddleboard. It should have been before 29, maybe?
There you go.
There you go. No, that's good, that's good. So you look at that, what they're showing you there, if you take the purple line, that's the route today, you drive all the way down to the small boat ramp, and then you just walk your board off of there. It's zero feet from where you stop your car to where you drop off your board. In their picture, as I said before, you have to stop outside the, what, the concessions, walk through, take 90-degree turns, and somehow find those lockers and somehow put your stuff in there while your car is still sitting there up on the drop-off zone, and you have to walk all the way back and go into a parking structure. So it's a lot more difficult than what he made it out to be for a stand-up paddler. And today, when you drive down there and you park up here, you can see if anybody would try to make off with your equipment, because there's only one way in and out of there, and you can see it the whole time you're going back to park your car. And you know that you can park somewhere in the vicinity. Most people don't park where he shows the purple. They park off to the right there, right in front of the sport fishing pier. So it's not even as long as is depicted there. So let's go to the next slide. Let's see. So where they show that straight line, again, that's very deceptive. You can't walk that straight line with your SUP or your kayak. You have to weave around through their development to get down to it. And then, that's just from their drop-off point. If you go back to the parking, like they measured their distance to compare to the current situation, you'd have to be up in the parking garage, and if that parking garage is full, you've got to go all the way down to the pier. And you won't know that until after you've already dropped off your board. So this is very, not conducive at all to stand-up paddlers or kayakers. They're just going to go somewhere else because that's too difficult. SUPers and kayakers aren't going to park in a parking garage when they don't know if there's parking in there. The Seaside Lagoon area is interesting. What they do is they take the square footage, they don't subtract out the fact that they paved over it, that they built more buildings, and then they take credit for letting people swim, on the right-hand picture there, in the area to the lower right. But they've actually paved over a third of Seaside Lagoon, so their comparison about the square footage is wrong. You lose about a third of the usable public open space of Seaside Lagoon, and that area for swimming varies with high tide and low tide. So at low tide, it's going to be very narrow, very, very short. I've submitted pictures that show that area actually dry, so they're going to have to dredge quite a bit. And you know that dredged sand, as soon as you get rains and you get tidal actions, it's just going to fill in, so you're constantly going to be filling that in. It's going to get shallower and shallower and less and less. Let's see, I think that's all I need from their drawing, so thank you. It was funny, you started out saying this is your, with the title, "This is your home for recreation," when recreation obviously isn't the center of this. And in fact, you know, their real motto, if you go to their website, is that they're a retail development company, not a recreation company, retail development. They also call it a village, which is a new marketing term. When I look it up on the Oxford Dictionary, it says it's a group of houses and associated buildings, smaller, larger than a hamlet and smaller than a town. This isn't a village, this is a shopping dining area. It's an art, they've called it before, more accurately, an RDE, Retail Dining Entertainment Development. They remarked that this has always been a commercial waterfront. We don't, nobody's opposed to a commercial waterfront. They're opposed to how much commercial is overdominating the waterfront in this solution. Talk about service-level parking, surface-level parking, well, that's the parking that recreational users need. Not parking structures, they need surface-level parking. Go to any marina, and you will find surface-level parking. That's where, that's the way they're designed. If we use this as the standard, we'd be paving over the Torrance Beach parking lot, we'd be paving over the El Porto parking lot, we'd be paving over half of Malibu, because they have oceans of asphalt, seas of asphalt between the road and the beach. Access to the beach and to, especially to marinas, requires surface-level parking. That's not an evil thing. And it also happens to preserve our views. I'd much rather look across an asphalt parking lot that's used, that supports recreation, than a giant 45-foot parking structure that blots out the sun and any views from the bike path we just spent $5 million bucks on. Let's see, what else? As to feasibility studies, I don't really want to get into the economics, but the first one was two weeks, was a two-week study, and it was done by a company that's conflicted. They do work for CenterCal. The second one, if you read it, said there were threats to the development, and both in almost every area, they said the threats were competition from other malls and other shopping areas, and the lack of visibility of the harbor. So it wasn't a resounding success story. And when they talked about the I pick-like theater, there was no marketing data in there. They said they couldn't find any. So they interviewed a few unnamed people and deemed that it would be successful. So there's no real study of that. I love the description of the San Pedro to Redondo electric boat trip. They're revitalizing their whole harbor. Why would somebody board an electric boat, go out through choppy waters, and then come all the way to Redondo wasting two hours a day when they're going to have their new ports a call? And by the way, the market hall that we think is so unique to ours, they've cut designs for a market hall that's almost a carbon copy of what you see there. I went to a baseball game in Rancho Cucamonga, and we went out afterwards, and as I'm walking into the mall that's across the street from the stadium, there's a market hall there. So market halls is kind of the new thing in these open-air malls. So it's not that, that unique. Although I do support it, I think it's a good thing, I just don't like where it is and how big it is. As to recreation, they cited all sorts of cool things like exercise classes, movies, and things like that. We have that today. We don't need to overbuild our harbor to continue what we've already got today. There's yoga on the pad where the octagonal building was, they have movies there, there's movies at Seaside Lagoon today, there's bands. We don't need to build 500,000 square feet of retail and 277,000 square feet of a parking structure to have these things that we already have today. Let's see, what else? The art and history stuff, we can do that without building a mall. We can put little pla, there are some plaques down there, we can add more if you want more history and art. There is art down there, we can add more without building a mall. They talk about conflicts with pedestrians and bikes on the current bike path, but what they neglect to say is they show a bike path going right through their waterfront promenade and over the bridge. Talk about conflicts, here's people going shopping, and they're going to have people and dining, you're going to have people biking right through the middle of it. We prohibit that on the pier, on the esplanade today, and even on the little asphalt path that goes, just connects to George Freeth Way, below some of the high-rises on the bluff. We don't allow bikes and pedestrians on the same path. Now, down on the strand part of it, there's a separate area, so we do separate it there. But most of our places where it's populated, we don't permit bikes with pedestrians, and all of a sudden, it's okay for CenterCal, but it's not anywhere else. Oh, the one picture was great, if you remember the street scene they showed of the new street. On the right, which is today, Seaside Lagoon, they said that they'd be putting in concessions that are consistent with renting SUPs and stuff like that. The very first building that they put in there says Burger House on it. And today, they, kids can go get, there's a concession at Seaside Lagoon, but it's outside the park. Why do we have to put a Burger House on the park when we have 500,000 square feet of development right behind it? Why are we eating up more room of a public park for something when we're building so much right behind it? And why couldn't they compromise and move that street back? Take that front, that building that's on the back of the parking structure, remove it, and put their access street there. That's not access for Seaside Lagoon, that's access for their parking structure and their other shopping. But there's no compromise. That wasn't even contemplated because they want to build as much as they can. And I don't necessarily fault them because we're, we don't, we haven't seen the financial agreement, what the city's going to fund, and what they're required to fund from the infrastructure perspective, but I think we're forcing so much on them that we're backing them into a tight spot. I think we should, personally, because we neglected the waterfront, we should pick up some of that bill. And there was a consultant that came in that showed there's ways to do it without costing the taxpayers more money. I like the LEED certified. I would make it a condition of your financial agreement with them because I've not seen that written down as a requirement anywhere. Stormwater, they said they're going to do all this nice stuff to stormwater. Well, two of the biggest stormwater drains that come through the system, or through the area, collect water outside the project area, so they won't be able to impact that. It's from the hard streetscape that's beyond their project area. And as I said before, yeah, the first three-quarters of an inch in a 24-hour period gets diverted to a storm drain, but after that, it's going straight into the harbor untreated. Also, those neat bioswales, which I support, those bioswales which help filter out the water, they count that as public open space. And you know, you're not going to let your kids play in the bioswales. It's not something that the public can really use. It's just, it looks nice and it has an impact for filtering, but it shouldn't be counted as replacement for what we're losing at Seaside Lagoon. Let's see, anything else? Someone commented on the public boat ramp workshops. The configuration we're seeing today, and it has continued to evolve on Mole B, was never presented at any workshop. It came up in the final EIR, and then could only be discussed, the only public meetings where it was discussed, were the deliberations of the Harbor Commission on the actual final EIR. Marina Cove did submit a study that we did not see before this, the submissions for this hearing, and it's a private study, it's not one done by the city, so there's some conflict of interest in that. It actually shows a shortage on peak days. If you took the current design and the number of parking spots they're taking away for trailer parking, the design shown October 10th, they show that there's a shortage of parking from their parking study. So their parking study actually supports what we're saying, is that there's insufficient parking. And she, you know, she said, "Well, you know, it's only 60 days where we'd overflow out of 300." Well, those 60 days are mostly weekends, and you should be designing at least to accommodate weekend traffic. I agree, you don't have to design for July 4th and those really peak days, but the average summer day, we should be able to handle without making trailers and overflow outrigger canoeors park almost a half mile away in a parking structure. She talked about Marina She talked about, Marina Cove folks talked about reconfiguration of slips, but the public and you guys and the Harbor Commission have no means to assess whether that's adequate or not, or whether that creates more impacts. So that's a deferred mitigation, and you're not allowed, CECL doesn't let you do, a deferred mitigation. We need to know the impacts now so we can comment on them and, and either devise mitigations, real mitigations, or vote down the project, or write a statement of overriding considerations. But you don't have enough data to do that today. So I think that's all I, I got picked up during the discussions. Again, I appreciate all the time you've given us on both sides. I don't know, my council, do you have any, anything you want to add? Well, okay. So with that, I will close my comments and, and thank you again for the time.
Okay, we're gonna have council questions. I wanted to clear something up, though. I know some people, it wasn't just with me, it was other council members up here, but it's regarding, comments made regarding my ability to be fair in the hearings. I want to address that. You know, I'm the mayor of this city. I was elected to be the mayor, I have the responsibilities of the mayor. I want to see that the harbor and anything else in the city's done right and done well. And my job is promote these, promote the harbor, promote the whole city. I think everybody in the room wants to see the same thing. The harbor done right, we have a difference of opinion sometimes, but what it doesn't mean, because somebody makes an accusation, it doesn't mean it affects my or our ability to act fairly, or that we are biased on this project. No one's biased on the project one way or the other. Well, that no matter what comes for the city, whether it's this, or Legato, or anything else, you, you get elected, you have opinions, you make statements, but you still have to come up here and act like you're on a jury. And you have to have an open mind and not have any biases. And, you know, the fact that we have an exclusive negotiating arrangement with CenterCal, this will come to the city council one way or the other, and the city will retain full discretion as to the fate of the CenterCal, or whatever project we want to call it. And everybody will be here, and there won't be any recusals, I don't believe. But, you know, when people throw accusations about campaign contributions to any one of us, and/or about our ability to be unbiased, it's, it's not right, it's not fair, and it's definitely, it's disrespectful because we don't say these things to you. But just get that out, you know, out in the, in the open, is that because we're, you know, you have to come up here and be unbiased and listen to all sides. And that's what our job is. So, anyway, I'm gonna open to council questions. I don't see any lights on right now, and who knows what would happen if nobody wants to ask any questions. Martha, you were on.
I, thank you. I do have some questions that I wanted to direct to staff. Bear with me, I have a few for you. I heard concern in the public regarding the water quality at Seaside Lagoon. The Harbor Commission conditioned the project for monthly testing of the water. In response to overwhelming public testimony, I would like to see if this water testing could be accelerated to weekly for at least a first year. Could you comment on that and your feelings on it?
We, we can certainly do that. We could revise the condition tonight if the council so chooses collectively to deny the appeal and to approve the project. You could modify the conditions as part of your action to include weekly testing rather than monthly testing. We as staff would, given what we've heard, would recommend that, that you do that.
Okay, thank you. That was quick. We have also heard much about restricting open access and the concern in the community about the harbor area. Please address how the project changes for good or for bad public access.
Maybe I'll take an initial crack at that and then turn it over to Aaron. More specifically, you've heard differences of opinions tonight, clearly, between the appellant and the applicant as to their vision for circulation in our harbor and to what uses. From staff's point of view, this project certainly increases public access to the waterfront. And Aaron mentioned in his presentation, the reconnection of Pacific Avenue, what we're calling Harbor Drive Extension, is certainly a significant circulation improvement. One of the, one of the biggest complaints we hear in our waterfront today is, is the disconnect between our two parking structures. If you come down to the pier and, and, and/or come at it from the other side, there's no way to interact or connect with the two. You have to literally get back in your car and, and head back out to Catalina to move to the other structure. The Harbor Drive reconnection would allow us to move seamlessly through the waterfront as it relates to, to parking. We feel the pedestrian bridge is a significant improvement. One of the challenges we have in the waterfront today is pedestrian movement. It's isolated, the pier is very much isolated from MOLB. You have to know your way around. We, many of us in this room do. Our visitors are challenged when they, when they come to the waterfront to know where, where to navigate, how to access the two different sites. The bridge we view is a, is a massive improvement from a pedestrian circulation standpoint. As was mentioned, that's a multimodal path, and multimodal paths are new in our waterfront. The first one to be constructed happened here recently with, I believe, the shade installation. That is part of our, our long-term planning. We intend to make that waterfront promenade accessible to both bikes and pedestrians. That's been, I believe, part of our LCP and part of the plan for, for some time, so that's not necessarily new to the CenterCal conversation. That's been an intention for, for quite a while. We believe the promenade itself is a massive public access improvement to what we see today. There was a slide in one of the presentations that showed what amounts to effectively a concrete wall when you're walking the perimeter of MOLB today. If you're with a young child, and I've walked it with my kids many times over many years, they can't see the waterfront from that location. The, the current height of the mole prevents their ability to see the water. This project elevates the mole and ultimately improves that, that connectivity on the outer edge and allows for that experience. So a visitor experiencing the waterfront today will have an improved platform and an improved point for circulation with that promenade. That's, we think, of significant value. The Main Street is a new enhancement to the, to the plan. There's a, there's a sense that Harbor Drive changes. Harbor Drive is definitely, with the, with the bike path and, and other things going on in our community, it's been a great, personally, I feel it's been a great addition, and it's, it's really become a, kind of a cornerstone of our waterfront. The Main Street, by adding the Main Street, creates its own new experience, and it will be different than Harbor Drive. The experience on Main Street will be most definitely different than Harbor Drive. So we, we view that, that new opportunity as an exciting sort of public access point. So those are some of the, the ways that we're excited. Clearly, the, the public boat launch, which has been a point of significant conversation for many, many months and years, is a new amenity to the harbor. Constructing that is an amenity we don't have today. That's a new, new recreational opportunity in our harbor. Certainly a zero-depth entry launch point for SUPs is something we also don't have today. We've talked about it in prior meetings with the Harbor Commission, but you go to, you travel to different locations around the world, and you go to different beaches, and you can rent an SUP, and you can wait out with your kid, put him on the SUP, help him out in the water, and, and sort of learn together in that format. Today, you have to drop him in off of a dock. That's a different experience. That's a different challenge when you're, when you have, you know, folks that are trying to kayak or, or stand-up paddleboard and, and new families and learning new experiences. So we view that as, as an enhancement, a recreational enhancement to, to what we have today. Anything else?
Probably just a couple of quick other things. The, the project is all about public access, both landside and waterside access. Right now, the city is cut off from our waterfront. When the village development was built, we destroyed our main access roads to the oceanfront. This project puts back in place, as Mike talked about, some of those features. What wasn't mentioned is we're also connecting the California Coastal Trail, which many of you know is a statewide system that, if you look at the Coastal Commission's map, ends at Redondo Beach and turns into a red line where our bike path goes into a parking structure. So we're, we're completing the California Coastal Trail, which is a huge statewide objective, and is very consistent with the Coastal Commission's goals. We've reviewed all the access plans with the Coastal Commission. They're very excited about us being able to bring people to the water's edge, people in and out of the water more efficiently by ramps, by lagoon openings and, and these types of features. So the plan is all about the outdoor space, and as the architect said, the buildings are framing the space that's most important here.
And I think the last element that, that should be mentioned is, is this notion of, of open space. The open space we have there today...